And they.
We have a quorum?
Yeah, you got six.
Okay.
Three, four, five, six.
I'd like to call the meeting to order, it's now seven o'clock, if you could all rise and say the pledge. Oh, we don't have a prayer. Okay.
I have a tie on.
It's all faced in.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Add a moment of silence. Okay, thank you. I'd like to welcome everybody back, I hope everybody had a good summer. We have three new faces on our board that I'd like to introduce you to. We have Lisa Nicholson, who is representative from the elementary schools in Glen Lake, Jess Byron from Mountain View Middle School, and then Sam Parent from the high school. We do welcome back Megan Dodge as our high school rep.
Student rep.
Student rep from the high school. I need a motion to approve the minutes from June eighteenth, please.
I'll make that motion.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
By Jennifer. Do we have any revisions? We all good? So no revisions, all in favor?
Aye.
None. Any opposed? We are unanimous, thank you. I need a motion to approve the July thirtieth school board meeting.
I'll make the move.
I need a second.
I'll second it.
Seconded by Sue. Any changes? Are they in a good place? Okay, all in favor? One, two, three. Any opposed? Abstain?
Aye.
One, two, three, three. Thank you. All right, do we have a correspondence folder?
We have no correspondence.
No correspondence today, commendations and good news. I'll just toss it out there that the custodians have done an amazing job up front.
Haven't they?
I mean, the whole hall sparkled. They've been working very hard. I just would really like them to, I guess, be noticed that they've done a really good job and they've worked very hard.
I saw the same thing, I'm not sure that I've seen such a shiny floor.
Tried to give them my address and they said, "Duh."
It's actually looking good at a lot of our schools.
Yeah.
I visited two other schools this summer.
That's everywhere, the schools all look really, really good.
Yeah, they're very sparkly.
Yep, we're ready.
Yeah.
I love the lockers.
The new lockers, yeah.
Oh, I have to wear those.
No more skinniness.
I know.
That'd be nice.
You can't even fit a book in there.
Yep.
Any other commendations or good news? I have some good news, Mountain View Middle School's ice hockey team, I know you've all heard me say. A lot of people don't know that they have an ice hockey team that goes through the summer. And they hit, they placed first in their division. They went into the playoffs and they did lose by one point, but they did end up placing second. This is all volunteer coaching, Tom Knoll was the head coach, did a great job. Bill Dexter was a great assistant coach, Joe McCarthy helped out. They put up a great team, those kids really represented Mountain View well, it was a great team. Did a good job. Public comment?
No public.
I have some news from the elementary.
Oh, you do have some, okay.
From Glen Lake, the good news from Glen Lake is that thirty-three children benefited from our summer specialized program this year, which ran from July ninth to August sixteenth, and the average daily attendance was ninety-seven percent. And the staff was very pleased with student participation and progress. And incoming kindergarten open house for families is Tuesday, September fourth, from one to three. And they're looking forward to another great year. Smart Lit had a successful summer school program. And during the four weeks of the program, Titan One teachers and special ed teachers co-taught students in grades one through four. And they used weekly themes. The program included guests such as the lobster lady, who showed sea animals during ocean week. And the program ended with parents being invited to the student presentations and what they did over the summer. And from Maple, the good news is that, again, we wanted to say the same thing, the summer custodial staff, Julie, David, and Butch have done an excellent job cleaning and repairing the classroom. We've had four smart mores installed, one in my room, in the building and a new roof on two older sections. And two summer school programs were a great success, thanks to Mrs. Milligan and the summer school teachers and support staff. And there are three new professional staff members joining the school community. Erica Swat will be teaching fourth grade, Bridget Koma will be teaching second, and Amelia Talbot will be teaching first grade.
And you'll be confirming all of those at the end of the meeting.
I have some news for MBMS.
Excellent.
I just wanna kind of build off of what you have been saying about the buildings, our custodians have really done a fantastic job over at Mountain View. Floors look great, all the halls have been painted, they were vacuuming the ceiling when I was setting up my classroom the other day. So that was nice to see, so it looks really good, and they've been, they've been working really hard all summer, so I'd like to thank them for that. The teachers are very excited about the carpet being taken out of our teachers' room. New tile being put in, new photocopiers, and nearly every classroom has a new whiteboard. Actually, two new whiteboards. So they're very excited about that, myself included. We have a facility open house on August thirtieth from one to three, where people can come and tour the building. So encourage people to do that and see the work that they've done. PBIS committee has been meeting at the school throughout the summer, and they're really excited and anxious to roll out some of their work that they've been working on this summer. They're gonna do a brief presentation on the teacher workshop day, first day of school, September fourth. And then they have half of the teacher workshop day on September eleventh. To really kind of introduce the staff to what we're doing, new student matrix, and all kinds of great things that are coming down the pipeline. We have four, the PBIS committee has four aspects they're really gonna be focusing on, and they're respect, community, pride, and responsibility. So students will be hearing those words a lot. All the sports teams started their tryouts today, so that's cross-country, boys and girls soccer, volleyball. Actually, there's one exception, field hockey starts the twenty-ninth.
I was gonna say, field hockey's not on my daughter, hasn't been in my schedule to get her there.
Yeah, it's the twenty-ninth. Seventh and eighth day teachers have participated in some Common Core workshops throughout the summer. And fifth and sixth grade teachers are slated to work on some Common Core and Reading Street workshops in the first trimester.
Hi, thank you.
I've got a few things. We also had some workshops this summer related to Common Core and reading instruction. And I wasn't able to attend, but from what I heard, they were really helpful. We had some music and theater productions this summer that were really good. And I think we have a new theater person, Dirk McDermott, and that should be good, he's really talented, he does a lot of energy. We had our third group of students go down to Nicaragua this summer, and that went really well. Had three teachers and five students. That was, they're gonna be doing a presentation at the New Boston Library, middle of September. So that's a pretty interesting trip. Tina Philibot's starting a dance ensemble this year, that should be good. We have a new librarian, which is very exciting. She is, seems very talented and up to date about technology and social media. She's got a lot of ideas, so that's exciting. Student council's been working on the first day of school, there's all kinds of events we have going on during this two-hour lunch block. So they've been working hard planning that. National Honor Society is working on, they're having an open house for new students on Tuesday, from three to five. And we're, we're working on, I don't know how much you guys know about it, but an advisory here at the high school. So I don't, I'm on the planning committee, and we've only had one meeting, so we still have to iron out the details. But I think we might be implementing it this year.
Yeah, and that's, that's part of, any ASNC requires all high schools to have an advisory period. So we've been trying to work, I know the administration and I, we've been trying to figure out how to make it a natural advisory versus a forced kind of, here's a schedule and here's your advisory. And so I know they've come up with some really creative ways of how to even work that into our normal schedule. So I'm guessing that's what that is, to look that far. Yeah, I think by the end of, by two thousand and fourteen, all high schools have to have a documented advisory of some sort, based on any ASNC standards.
Yeah, it's on our agenda for Tuesday, so we'll be talking about that. So far, from what we've talked about, it will look like each teacher will have, you know, this building professional will have around twelve students that they have for the four years here, and they're their advisor. And they meet once a week, probably we haven't figured that out yet, or something like that. So the kids have an advocate at the school, so I'll keep you up to date about that.
Thank you. Standing committee reports, HR.
HR will be meeting on September tenth at five-thirty. If members can please email either yes or no, so we can make sure we have a quorum, that would be great.
Do you want to, Denise?
To me or Denise, or we compile and just make sure we have, yeah. Pretty much if you can just let everybody know, so we can make sure we have that one, would be great.
Yep. And I think when we get to C and E, I think that's where we may have a conflict with an area meeting we scheduled. So I know MC has maybe some potential other dates to maybe have C and E on, so we'll wanna, if you wanna connect with her before we either cancel one or the other.
After my last.
Yeah.
Okay, P and C, P and C's next meeting is September seventeenth. We did have our board retreat last week, which was a success, we had great, great attendance. We missed you Lori, and Dan, it was good you could make it for the last few minutes. But now we got a lot of great work done, looking forward to the years as far as our direction and what lies ahead for us. C and E?
C and E has not met, and we do have a conflict, so I'll be getting back to let you know what that date when is going to be.
Budget committee report, budget committee has not met since the last time we met. Our first meeting for the year to kick it off is September eighteenth. I understand that town budget packets will be ready to go, but that's all I got. AREA planning committee report, Philip is not here, Jenny, do you have anything?
Either Jenny or Dan.
Or Dan.
We're pretty much doing a lot of language stuff now, nothing really changing. I know Beau is really pursuing Beau.
Sean Dembarton.
Pardon me, I'm sorry, Dembarton is pursuing, Beau is pursuing, and so they're working on alternate agreements as well. So there may be some conversation that we will have at some point to see what the group's ideas would like to be exactly on that. The other thing is, we will be planning a Gostown meeting, public meeting, so that we can get input from the community as well as to where they would like us to go and what the community is thinking as far as areas are going.
Will that be for September?
Yes, we need to do it September. Our date is somewhere, it was initially October first, I don't think that's gonna happen. I think it's probably going to be sometime in October, our final plan will be finished. So we need to get our public input into that and our school board. If anyone has anything that they're thinking, any thoughts that they'd like to send us, please do that.
And all the minutes so far are online, so if you wanna see what the committee has talked about and what proposals are out there, they're all online on our webpage, so.
And please get back to us, we would like some input on any things that you think, or any ways you would like us to pursue differently.
And Sue, because there's three meetings scheduled in September?
Yes, and actually, those, those meetings are public, if anyone wants to be at any of them.
September tenth, September eighteenth, and the twenty-fifth.
Very good, thank you.
I'll save you from, go through your calendar.
Do we have an idea for when we would do the Gostown meeting? We, should we try to piggyback it on one of ours, like, like maybe start at a?
We were talking about, actually, I think that our discussion is like the first few weeks of, the first few weeks of September.
Okay.
By middle, anyway, I think, we'd like to get going.
And these meetings are all with the SAU?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
I can add a couple of things to that, there's been some significant discussion over the other school board members participating on our advisory boards with a vote.
Subcommittee votes.
The advisory committees being the four that we just talked about.
Right.
So that's still up in the air, and that's one of the things that we believe need to come to this body for a discussion to say, hey, what were you feeling on that? Another discussion that we haven't quite gotten into were some things that are on the table that have to do with money, of course. One is the percentage of rental charge. We have been at a two and a half percent level, which is like a forty-year depreciation schedule. One, I think the last thing I saw was one point five, I don't know if they've amended that yet.
I believe it was two.
Two, it could have been somewhere between that. So there's a, and that would have some kind of financial impact, of course, and it's just not, and that would be for both districts. So all the things, because it's just one area agreement. And those are probably a couple of the biggest. The other one is the discussion around the way the RSA is worded. The RSA word, SAU charges, because the SAU budget is actually separate and distinct from our budget. The SAU has their own public meeting, and it gets voted in by the members, it doesn't get voted in by the people, it gets voted in by the school board members as a group. And the divvying up of that, and the statute talks about half of it looking at the total of the value of all properties in town, and the other half has to do with student population. Okay? And so there's some discussion that the half of it that has to do with evaluation should then not be included in what we consider a tuition rate. That's another discussion, and so that's something else that we're looking for your guys' input to us, because we have our opinions, but we're there to try to represent this board.
And the way Dan is talking about right now is standard practice right now, if we want to change, or Beau has an issue with that part of it. As far as the subcommittee voting goes, it's something that, that I think most of us feel kind of comfortable with doing, because our subcommittees, we have always invited the board members to come to and to participate in. The vote is really not binding, because the recommendation that we vote on at that meeting then comes finally to our school board, and we vote on it, so we have the ultimate vote anyway. It's just giving them a little bit more participation if they should, so choose. And so, so choose, because their boards are a lot smaller than ours are, and so that's an issue. So that's something that I don't know whether anybody else has a real issue with that standing point, but I think.
The only concern that I would have would be that it changes up the number of what would make a quorum. And I know a couple of our subcommittees have difficulty enough getting a quorum of Gostown members.
They wouldn't be included in the quorum, it would be our quorum. And then if they choose to come, then they would be included in the vote, is pretty much how we're talking, is, am I right?
Yeah, I think they, they had proposed some language that talked about the Gostown quorum versus adding them as a quorum.
Okay.
Because clearly, if only, if you have a four-member committee and only one member shows up, and two of theirs show up, you have a quorum, which means they can outvote Gostown, so I think they were trying to address that through the quorum piece.
Exactly, that there's not gonna be a quorum. We have to make sure that our quorum is there, because it's our committee. But anybody, you know, if either of the other districts want to come to participate, then that's wonderful, because you get, you get the information and a little bit of input from that as well, so.
And it's not unanimous, because I just haven't been able to get over the hurdle of allowing another school board a vote on our subcommittee, even whether it is advisory or not. It might be moved, but if it's moved, why do it? I mean, we've always allowed them, and I haven't been able to get over that hump. And if anybody has any ideas, if that's what the majority thinks ought to be, help me out by trying to convince me why an elected member of a different school board in an area agreement would have a vote versus a cooperative school district, which is a completely different layout. Cooperative is, is the whole group moves forward. In an area, the agreement is supposed to say, this is what you're gonna pay for tuition.
Dan, I'm completely with you.
I think Sue has something to say, look.
Oh, okay, Sue.
Did you have something to say, Sue?
Yeah, I'm, I'm, I share the same apprehension that Dan deals. Is there nothing in statute that tells us, that allows?
Let me say one more thing about this, is the simple fact of the matter that there would be one voting member. So any vote.
From each community.
One from New Boston, Dembarton, three from Gostown. So there would be input, but there necessarily wouldn't be a whole lot of impact on outcome of voting. And it's, you know, it's just one thing to include our other districts, give them, you know, a little bit of.
My, my, my point still is, is do we know if we can do it legally?
We believe we can, they.
Do we know we can, not we believe, do we know we can?
Philip corresponded, from my understanding, with the attorney, who says there was nothing he could find, this is my understanding, in statute that prohibited another jurisdiction from participating on an advisory board. And that's why I started with advisory, but I never really defined it as an advisory board. They cannot at this table.
Right. That was the initial, the initial proposal, was to have a person that would vote on this board. That's illegal, you know, that can't happen. So what we came to is kind of just a little vacation of that, I think.
Okay.
I actually have the same concerns with Dan, they already have the ability to participate. If they come to any committee meeting, they're allowed to sit at the table and provide input and everything else.
They don't come.
I mean, the only thing they can't do is do a vote. You know, their, their kids are here as tuition students, you know? That'd be like me saying, I wanna vote on some committees of the Manchester School Board, because we send tuition students to the tech. You don't get that, I mean, that's, that's not what happens, it's not the way a tuition system works.
Discussion for another night.
Okay, so essentially, beyond that, we're looking to have a meeting for the residents of Gostown to, to collect. And we need to do that in the month of September, in the first few weeks. So we essentially, at this point, September is, is upon us, so we're looking next week or the week following. Is this something that you guys will get back to us, is this something we, I mean, it very well may be the most streamlined to have it around our meeting on the seventeenth, I mean, is that?
Yeah, probably do it just before our meeting.
Right.
I do know that Philip had some opinion on the way he was thinking that might occur.
Okay.
I didn't hear much more than that.
Maybe the subcommittee needs to get together, the three of you need to get together and let the board know.
Yes, and get back to us, but does the board mind, should that be the outcome?
I think the seventeenth would work great.
Does the board mind seventeenth, and using part of our meeting?
Would you like to be the beginning part, or do we wanna start a little earlier, or how would that?
Probably earlier, like start at six-thirty.
You'll have P and C that night as well.
Well, okay.
Well, P and C can figure that out.
It's gonna be, well, we have to legally keep it open for twelve minutes, if I remember correctly.
It's not a public hearing, it's just a forum, so it's not a, it's not a public hearing.
It's, we would like the input, Kate is what it is. So we would like anyone who's interested in, in giving us their opinion of, you know, things that we could add, delete.
Okay, so the three of you, the committee will convene, and you'll get back to us?
I mean, the seventh, if it's good, at seven o'clock, I think would be good.
And you'll, remember, you'll have negotiations that afternoon as well.
Yeah, I know, I just noticed the three-thirty, we're meeting with the GEA.
All right, so just let us know. Superintendent's report.
Just some upcoming dates to make sure you have in your calendars, some of them we've just talked about. Teachers return on September fourth, next Tuesday. Kiddos return on Wednesday, I think we are ready for them. Buildings look good, all our staff have been hired, we're pretty excited. I think we've got some great, great new teachers that we hired over the summertime, so we are ready to go. For those watching or listening at some point, bus routes for next year have been posted today, so those are up, please check them. Many of them have changed, just as kids move from elementary to middle to high school. We have to shift sometimes, and we had a couple of high school buses that were over, so we needed to shift some routes around, so just make sure you check your routes for your students before Wednesday. We talked about area meetings, we have three of them coming up, September tenth, September eighteenth, and September twenty-fifth. On the seventeenth, just a reminder, we have GEA negotiations at three-thirty to five-thirty. The eleventh is the teacher workshop day, so we'll be doing here, professional development, it's also voting in our schools on that day. And on September nineteenth, which we have on the agenda, which we'll talk about later, is the area review meeting requested by Dunbar. And so this board will need to appoint three members to attend that meeting. Facilities-wise, I will concur, the custodians have really, really worked hard, and Jerry, to make our buildings look great, they've done a ton, a ton of work to make them look nice, but also be responsive to things that were broken and fixing them. So I just wanna highlight some of them, because I think it's important for the board and the public to recognize the efforts and the work that went in. Starting, and I'm just going through my list, starting at Mountain View, we've painted a ton of the. Starting and I'm just going through my list. Um, starting at Mountain View, we've painted a ton of the interior. All the hallways were painted. Um, we were actually looking to hopefully paint most of the classrooms as well. Um, that we had the prisoners booked for three weeks. If you remember, Hillsborough County has that prisoner program, which we love. Um, for three weeks, we had them booked. The week before they were supposed to show up, they cut the program. Um, and so we lost three weeks of ten to fifteen guys of labor that we were planning on. So um, that cut a lot down. But I will say they did get over there and painted. Um, so it does look much nicer. Um, let's see, what else did we do? We sanded and recoded the gym floor at the middle school. We moved a ton of rooms, just put in classrooms where they need to be. People in the right classrooms in the right spaces, um, with the shifting of some of the teachers. Um, we've cleaned all the lockers. We've done the tile and carpet replacement in all of the band and chorus rooms, in the teachers' room, in the main office area. So the main office area is now tiled with carpeting in the offices. But the main office, so again, kind of like the library here, where we looked at what were access roads, kind of what were patterns and where was carpeting getting. So we put this in. So the main office, we tiled the walkway, but all the office areas are carpeted. So that will be nice. Um, we put a new hilltop flooring in. If you haven't seen it, it's beautiful, although it makes the walls look worse. But I was hoping we could get that painted, but it was just not in our cards this year. Um, but the floor looks really nice. It has all the inlay. I think it will really be beautiful. Um, we've seal coated the back. We're still, um, Jerry's still working to put the fencing up, but that will get done within the first week of school if it won't get done before then. Um, let's see, we've installed the panic door devices that we needed to do, um, the fencing. We've put tons of playground mulch in, painted, um, hallways and stairways. At Glen Lake, they landscaped around the marquee sign. Um, they installed some new air conditioners. Of course, with the little guys, we have air conditioners in just about every room now. Um, they installed some door alarms. Um, and those are alarms that go on the doors. What we find with the access outside with our little guys, it's very easy for them to run. And so we put little alarms on the doors. So if a kid were to open the door when we didn't know it, we would identify quickly that they were at the door. Um, particularly with when we get into our autism kind of kids, you know, with the communication and stuff. Um, and again, we just did a really, really good thorough cleaning. Glen Lake obviously is our newer school, so there wasn't much to do. Maple Lab, they've replaced um, the portion of the roof that needed to be replaced. Um, we've cleaned out the storm drains. We've done lots of interior painting, mulching and weeding. Um, the bathroom partition and the girls' bathrooms that are in, they're scheduled to be installed hopefully again before school. Um, all our schools had asbestos reinspection. Every three years we need to do that. So they've done that. Um, and those letters will go home to every parent. Um, they've done a couple of room moves. They've painted the hallways. Um, we upgraded the hot water heater on the first floor, wiring and upgraded some wiring in a couple of classrooms. And and just district wide, we have reprogrammed all of our radios. So to meet the new F A J standard, I'm gonna say those three letters, um, thinking they're the right three letters, but basically we have to have them on a frequency that's different than other than the police and fire. We can get on their frequency, but just for general use, it can't interfere. And so we have certain bands that we can now use. So we had to reprogram some of them. We have purchased some new ones with somebody last year. Um, and so even the SAU office, we now have four radios at the SAU should emergency happen that, um, for example, last year at Mountain View, when all the radios were in the main office that we couldn't get to. So we now have four backup ones at the SAU office that we can grab and get to buildings if that happens again. Again, emergency management as we go through this is important. Um, at Bartlett, um, we've painted again a lot of classrooms, did all the floors, removed whiteboards and replaced them with some of the Bartlett whiteboards were original to the, when we first started with whiteboards. So again, they get old, so we've replaced a bunch of whiteboards there. We removed the old sink fountain combinations and installed new sinks with new cabinetry in the first floor. I think that's in progress. I don't think that's completed yet, but that that's part of the renovation of Bartlett that we took out of the project because it's something our guys can do. Um, and so that was budgeted and it will get done. Um, let's see, they installed a playground border, cleaned all of the cafeteria here at the high school. We tuned up the boilers. Um, we replaced the theater lights. Um, and I say this because our lift has died. Um, and so you will likely see, we will probably need to rent a lift for a couple of projects. Um, Jerry's in the process of getting costs for a new lift. Um, so you will likely either see that as a, we really, it's getting to be too expensive for us to rent it and it, we should just buy one. Um, so but he's got to figure out some cost product, you know, some costs on those. Um, but we do, we definitely need at least a lift in the school district because we use them frequently. Um, restriped all the parking lots, um, new lockers upstairs. If you haven't seen them, they look beautiful. New carpet here in the information center along with a new kind of striping here for, um, keep the uh, carpet nice. Let's see, asbestos reinspection. We painted the music hallways down that direction. Um, let's see, lots of things. Did the gym floors again. We re-tiled the nurses' office. The tiles were coming up, so we have re-tiled that. Um, the sports flooring in the cafeteria, the basketball hoops are installed. The electricity we're waiting for, they should be in in the next day or two to install the electricity to put them up and down. Um, we were, we are unable to put the sports flooring in the gym floor, in the gym. Um, after exploring, the guys came out um, to look at the floor and they do have to do all kinds of tests for the floor. There's too much moisture in the floor, so they will install it, but they will not guarantee it. Um, and so we chose not to go there. They looked for other products. Um, it was the same week he was going to a flooring conference. So he was looking for other products that could withstand a higher um, moisture content, could find nothing. So we opted not to do anything at this point in time with the floor because it didn't make sense to put it in and have something happen for twenty-five or thirty thousand dollars. It didn't make sense to do that. So um, the basketball hoops are in, but there is no new floor. So um, you'll see that. Um, bathroom partitions are in, waiting to be installed. Um, again, um, reprogrammed two-way radios. We uh, inserted a new set of exterior security doors. The chimney has been extended. So if you remember last year, we talked about this was an end of the year project, that chimney that has the overdraft that you can smell in the classroom. So they've extended that, so that should alleviate that problem. God bless you. Um, we've upgraded the electrical service in our T five classroom, which is um, our technology room. Um, installed new music practice room doors. Uh, I talked about the lockers. Uh, fire alarm panel replacement. They are actually in the office right now working on it. Um, we fixed the heater coil in the boys' locker room. Um, we installed, actually, we've done this district wide, installed direct line, um, I wash stations. We had to do that as part of the labor um, research. Cleaned all the lockers. Um, and put in a dedicated service for the new treadmill in the weight room. Um, on top of that, we've also done lots of other littler things, but um, feel free to come into the schools during open houses or whatever. They look really, they've done a really, really nice job on getting everything up to speed and have been working very hard to do that. So, all right, give them an extra hand. Just a reminder, G E S S A negotiations, we should be getting a letter from them. This is Keith, Suzanne, and Dan. Diane's the alternate. So at some point, you may want to think about getting together to start to think about what proposals you're going to put out for them. Um, Carol and I can be available, so just let us know what you guys want to do and when you want to meet.
Why don't we try to formulate a date right now? How's that? Would that work for you, Stacey? We're retired.
I know, that's true. I don't go to the doctors a lot.
Dan, what type of, what time of the evening works well for you?
Budget season, I get out at four thirty. Likely that'll be consistent until after the general election, at which time I may never get out. Until the budget's presented to the legislature.
I mean, is it six o'clock too early, you think, Wade?
No, I can get there by six.
And then why don't we um, look for the end, towards the end of September? Is there a better day for you in September?
Um, as long as it's not with area.
Okay. Stacey, for you, what's a good, what's a good date?
We have to avoid a couple of the last weekends.
We don't do it on the weekends.
Six, uh, six o'clock time.
We have on occasion.
Yeah, Fridays are not good.
No, we don't do Fridays.
It's hard to get them there on Friday, so.
Okay. When we're thinking about that, Diane.
Yes.
The area public input, is there any reason why we can't like schedule it right now? Because the next time we meet as a group won't be until the seventeenth.
Right. No, that was where I was trying to bring our our conversation, but it sounded like the three of you wanted to.
The last two weeks, I don't have a, I have a seven o'clock meeting every night. So.
The last two weeks you do?
I have a meeting every single night in September at this moment in time.
How about the week of the seventeenth?
Why don't we just set it up for the night of the seventeenth and then make that work?
Yeah.
Okay, I think we're talking about two different things. We're talking about G E S S.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Okay.
Will we get a seventeen?
But I heard you.
If we have to do sooner, we can do sooner. I mean, I can do, I can do sooner in September if we have to. The fifth on I can do.
And the public one?
On the seventeenth, right now.
I have a commitment on the fourth.
Now, how long do you think it'd be? Because if we need to meet.
It'd be a solid, it would be at least an hour.
So if we do something, we could meet earlier and I can just go directly to the SAU after work. It should be five-ish.
Yeah.
Because I don't have an, I don't have an open night in September. I've been meeting every night at seven.
Do you want to try to do a five thirty or?
Yeah, that would be fine.
I'm gonna do a five thirty because then it gives you a half hour to get to a meeting. Is there any preference on the day, Dan?
Nope. If you wanted to actually, if you, if we did it on the seventeenth, that would be a killer day, but it's, that's fine. Maybe when.
Do you want to do it on the tenth?
I can't. I can't do it. We have G E negotiations on that day, so I can't do it before then.
Okay, then.
I am open on the tenth.
So that's.
We have area, don't we?
We have the area then, right.
Yeah, at seven. That's why I'm thinking if we did it at five, we can do it at five thirty.
Yeah, five thirty is about the earliest I can probably get to there.
You didn't want to do it at five thirty, so.
I don't.
But if, that's the meeting you're gonna be at seven, right?
Right. So we can do it there.
So we could do it at six if you wanted to, Keith?
Yeah, it'd just take an hour.
And we can go six to seven.
Yeah, that's fine.
Because we're not going anywhere. I like that.
The tenth at six. What I'll try to do is, um, I will try to get the packet information from last year's negotiations where it ended.
Yeah.
And I'll try to get that out to you at least a week in advance so you can take a peek at it.
Yeah.
I don't, you are already gone, so you don't know exactly how the last couple of weeks went, so.
I have two sessions I missed.
So.
Okay, so you'll get that packet?
I'll get that out. Yeah, I'll put that out. I'll actually send it out to the whole board so they can kind of get an idea.
Okay. And then just a.
Yeah, I just noticed though that anything you send out for negotiations is confidential. It's not public information because it's negotiations.
Oh, wait a minute here. If I send it through the emails, it's public information.
Yeah, I would just send it to the, I mean, people can give you feedback. You can look at the contract and give feedback, but it's not, it's negotiation, so it's not public.
Yeah, I can't send it out.
Is it public if it goes to less than five?
Yeah, if I send it just to the members of the committee, that's okay. I if I send it to the whole board, it's a public document then.
Yeah, because the committee can meet. The committee can talk without it being posted in as a negotiation session.
Okay, and then Jenny and Jen, just to follow up on, Jenny and Dan, just to follow up on on the discussion on the area meeting. We're looking to start that area meeting at six thirty on September seventeenth here at the media center.
Okay, I had heard a few seven o'clocks.
I'm just wondering for the public if six thirty is too tight for them. That's my only concern. When you say seven o'clock, they know our meetings are at seven and I think it gives them a little more time to come home, get settled, and actually come back out the door.
Thanks. What does anybody think?
I kind of agree because.
Okay.
Seven is good.
So we'll start it at seven?
Can we ask the PNC?
And our public meeting will stop and start when that finishes.
And P and, is PNC able to get something out?
No, PNC can meet before.
PNC meets at six.
Yeah, I know, but I'm just saying the, to get the the information out to the public that we're having it.
All right, like in different newsletters and whatnot, absolutely.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
We need to have a PNC meeting then.
Um, we can call that beforehand and.
Yeah, but do you want to get together before the seventeenth and try to get together what we want to put out or?
Yeah, I think we would need to because we need to advertise it for the seventeen.
Yeah, so would you like to pick a date for that right now or we'll all get it down?
You know what, why don't, why don't we meet out here? We'll just.
Okay.
Oh, wait, no, it has to be a public meeting?
No.
We have to post it, no?
Yeah, you have to post it. Sorry.
Yeah, that's okay.
I mean, you've got to post it.
All right, you know what? Let's get this meeting back on track if we can, please.
So you don't want to pick a date right now?
Not right now.
So let me go back to my superintendent's notes.
Right, because we are.
Again, we do have some other things, so we got sidetracked on G S S.
We definitely did.
Um, we had, just uh, I think the teacher reps talked about, we had lots, we had tons of professional development this summer, lots on closed reading, on common core, on assessment. We had over a hundred teachers participate at different levels. Some of them were multi-days. We had lots of teachers teaching teachers, which was wonderful to see. So we had lots of teachers who went to training, some AP classes and some um, pretty intensive trainings on closed reading who then came back and trained our staff. Um, I stopped into most of them and they were just, it was just wonderful engagement by teachers on professional development and getting up to speed. So um, I just want to commend the teachers for their efforts over the summer because a lot of times, some of them were paid, some weren't. Um, but to come in over the summer and really dedicate their time to coming in in September and being successful and moving us forward for the common core and stuff is great to see. So um, just a kudos to our teachers for that. We have new teacher orientation. Um, they had two days already of kind of our green book course where we kind of go over what our classroom expectations are, what we want to see in every classroom. Um, Wednesday, we'll have new teacher orientation at the SAU level where we do all of our kind of training stuff that we have to make sure they know about. Um, and then Thursday, they'll be in the school buildings um, with their mentors and doing professional development that way. Um, and the last thing I have is just, I'm looking for board feedback. I got an email from Sue DeRusso from the town. The selectmen are actually talking tonight about the potential of spraying for Miss uh, um, for West Nile, spraying mosquito spraying. The town got an estimate. Um, there's lots of state permits we have to get to do this. The town got a cost of seven, uh, two, seven, two thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars to spray three fields. Um, Saret Field, Roy Park, and Barnard Park. Um, and so they, Sue asked me if we were interested in spraying the school fields. So I'm looking for board feedback, input, direction. Um, it will likely be a couple thousand dollars to do that. Um, we are in Gothstown because Manchester's in the high zone. We are in a moderate zone. Um, there's no direct threat, but it's a moderate threat. Um.
Do we have a health professional who deals in this that could advise us? Because I, I put on the little spray and they usually leave me alone, uh, but I'm not.
We don't, other than I can certainly get more information from the gentleman that Sue contacted, um, who is actually the, it's um, what's the name of the company?
Yeah, if he, if he's the vendor, um, I'm not so sure. Not if he's the vendor, but that's his job.
Dragon mosquito control, yeah. Um, the state won't, I mean, they won't tell us to or not to.
Right.
What they do is put out the level of threat. We have ne- I, I asked Jerry if he ever recalls spraying before and he said he remember back in like maybe nineteen eighty, they did something, um, but doesn't remember like doing a whole spray. It was so, he recalls doing something in like the early eighties, but doesn't re- recollect us spraying ever before. He, it was something he read or something he saw. Yeah, it's just something, yeah, he wasn't here. It was something that he remembers.
I guess how late are our games going and how late are our practices is going on the field? Are we getting to the prime evening hours for mosquitoes?
Well, we ha- we don't have light, so we have to be done by dusk, which is when mosquitoes come out. Yep.
You know, I don't think it's worth the risk for a couple thousand dollars.
It seems like short money, you know?
I would agree with that. And on if you're concerned with the mosquitoes, you would have the option to spray yourself personally.
I think a lot of this, you know, the kids are out there playing, the students, I should say, and I don't think they're the ones that are getting sprayed. And I think the visitors that are coming, the parents coming are doing it.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and even when you play sports, when you sweat a lot with those bug sprays, it wears off very fast.
Do we have a motion on the floor?
I'll make the motion that we do it.
That we do it?
Yeah.
Have a second?
I'll second it.
Any further discussion? Do we, are we willing to put a cap on it or should we put a cap on it? I mean.
Well, which, which still are you not gonna do?
It's gonna be what it is. I can't. Yeah, and I have really.
Well, just let, just to cut off. I mean, are we willing to do it for three thousand? Are we willing to do it for ten thousand? You know, where, is there a cap? Should we cap it?
I think that really should be at the discretion of the administration superintendent or her designated.
I mean, I'm.
Anything over five thousand she has to come back to us for.
I'm not great at acreage. Saret Field, she doesn't have many acres, but Roy Park and Barnard Park are twenty-seven, twenty-eight acres.
And Saret Field is easily as big as that.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, so that was for twenty, twenty-seven fifty, including the permit costs. I don't know what the permit costs were, um, out of that, so.
State has to get there.
Um, and they were looking to spray the week of September ten to sixteen, so I'd need to coordinate that certainly with athletics and make sure nothing was happening, but.
Yeah.
Would this be all the fields, Stacy?
All our fields. I, it would probably be middle school.
You're not looking to do any playgrounds, right? Just the fields.
Yeah, it would probably be just the middle school and high school unless the, the fields, which is where people would be out in late afternoon.
Right, right.
Yeah.
Um, I don't know that we would spray Glen Lake or.
And Mountain View Fields are kind of a marshy area, which might be a little more prone to mosquitoes.
Where's that from?
Mountain View are, there's a lot of water around Mountain View.
What are we looking at for cost?
I have no idea.
So we don't know what cost?
I don't.
And we have nothing else? We prefer to spend this money on?
Well, if it's more than five thousand, she has to come back to the board to get approval.
Yeah, I don't think it would be. If we were just doing, if we're doing Mountain View as a high school.
I don't think it's gonna be, yeah. Just looking at what they're gonna charge the town.
Yeah.
Right, it can't be.
Our facilities aren't any bigger than that.
My thoughts are just the fields, not to do the schools. Just the fields.
Yeah.
And what are we getting out of this? Is there, they're sort of like a guarantee, you're not gonna, it's gonna kill everything, or are they?
Of course not.
No.
Guarantee.
Or, but, or is this just a shot in the dark of, yeah, we're throwing something down, but it might work, it might not, we might not even have any problems that we're just throwing mud?
Foolish child.
Right.
Right, as I can say, is the state has said we're a moderate risk, because they tested some pools and found.
In Manchester, they found?
In Manchester, no, they found him in Gothstown as well.
They did not?
There was a list, yes, and so that was, is what creates us at the moderate risk. We haven't had anybody be bit, nor would they ever be able to prove that they were bit by a mosquito on Gothstown High School, you know? Like, I don't know how that would, how you could ever bring that back to a school, but, um.
No, most people who get bit have no symptoms whatsoever, so, you know, probably out there munching away on them all, don't they?
Right, right.
Inquiry, last year, we did not spray. Do we know if the state came and said we're moderate last year?
No.
I don't.
I can't imagine we would.
That is something that I would really appreciate knowing, so that I could vote consistently. I mean, if last year was the same, if this is much worse year than last year, that's something different. If it's the same or less than last year.
Oh, yeah. For this area, it is.
Yeah, I think because they found mosquitoes. I don't believe last year they found us, I don't.
Right, well, winter didn't kill them off. Last year, we didn't, we weren't at this much higher of a risk. People were not spraying in the communities around here at all last year.
Last year. No.
You've got all your major communities, like Manchester, they're all spraying already.
Dairy, London Dairy, those folks.
Yeah.
I like your idea, Jen, though, putting some kind of cap in it. I'm presuming the cap is forty-nine ninety-nine.
Sounds like it's intrinsic, though.
Hmm.
Yeah, it is. So it's not definitive. It's what it is. Then, if it's more than that, it doesn't happen, because our next meeting is after the spray day.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, I, I can't imagine that it will be more than five thousand. The town is two thousand seven hundred dollars.
No, they're doing the town for twenty-five.
Yeah, we're doing less acreage than the town.
Yeah, I can't even imagine that it would be close to that.
Maybe we can get a better deal for two grand. I'm good for two.
We just don't know.
Right.
And if two's not enough, which area do you not do?
All right, guys, any more discussion?
I think we're a good mark.
Yeah, most of them do.
That's right, baseball field.
Are we done discussing? We'll call the vote. All in favor? One, two. Oppose? One, two. Abstain.
I'm abstaining.
One, two. Jenny, did you vote?
She voted for, I think.
You voted for, I did not get Jenny on the count. I got Keith, Suzanne, Jenny, four. I got Lori and Diana Guns. Jennifer and Dan abstained. Motion carries?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, um, is that it for the superintendent's report?
Yes.
Uh, business operations, financials, manifest and vouchers.
Uh, what do you mean tonight? Um, do I need a motion to dispense the reading of the detail, or is that just?
Just give the total.
No, we need to do it.
Uh, just, yeah.
And, okay, there are three warrants for tonight for your plager. The total manifest for the June twentieth through June thirtieth is one million, five hundred and seventy thousand, one hundred and thirty-three dollars. I believe you all have the numbers.
Yes.
Um, payroll, taxes, benefits, majority of it, one million, two sixty-seven, one fifty-three. We've got sped expenses at fifty-seven thousand, three fifty-two. And the general expenses that go over the threshold we were talking about. Ergo and demand, which are whiteboards, eleven thousand, nine sixty-three. Gothstown Truck Center, that, don't forget, this is back in June, for transportation, ninety-three thousand, eight twelve. And public service for Gothstown High School in Mountain View, nineteen three forty-five. That's the total of one million, four forty-nine, six twenty-six, the difference being those items, that's less than the detail total. Ray, is that five thousand or ten thousand?
Five.
Five thousand. Any questions on that? Flip the page and go to the next exciting page. That would be for the July manifest. Total of one million, five twenty-three, four twenty-seven. Payroll and taxes, including health, eight forty-three, eight twenty-four. Sped activity, that would be Crotchet Mountain and Nashua School District. I'm gonna do this in my head, could that sped, you see the sped subtotal there, right?
No.
Okay. Seventy-five, sixty-five. General expenses. We've got some Apple equipment, thirty-seven, six eighty-seven. We've got the Honeywell Energy Upgrades, a hundred and three thousand, eight hundred. Laptop leases, a hundred and sixty-eight thousand, thirty-three dollars. Gothstown Truck Center for the June athletic transportation was eighty-six, forty-five. We pay once for the property and liability insurance for twenty-twelve, twenty-thirteen at a hundred and one thousand, five hundred and seventy-seven dollars. The alt ed rental space for the year is twenty-three thousand. The online subscriptions for Power School at fourteen thousand, twenty-seven dollars. Rico, those nice new copiers rented, seventy-six oh seven. And Euralis landscaping for the game field sod is seventy-eight hundred dollars. General subtotal, four thirty-four, four eighty-eight. Inquiries, seeing none. The last warrant goes through actually today. The manifest total is one, seven, two, nine, one, nine, five. And we have some payroll, taxes, and benefits of eight eighty-one, one thirty-four. Sped expenses, um, the Nashua School District, thirty-four, nine, forty. And then a whole bunch of little general expenses. Um, there's any flooring that we did, um, the office, MVMS, fifty-four, seventeen, the Hilltop, seventeen thousand. This room here, thirty-three thousand. Some more MVMS office cart fitting and V C T, I'm not sure what V C T is.
Yeah, tile.
Final, final tile.
Okay, thirty-one, six twenty-one. Four classrooms for twelve thousand, sixty-seven. Remember in the big gym, we said, hey, here's a new scoreboard, that came in at ten, six fifty-six. We got some radios, the balance ode is seven oh nine six, a whole bunch of different ancillary stuff. There was a fuel surcharge for the Gothstown Truck Center, that was negotiated, sixty-three, five ninety-eight. We have some math texts, ninety-nine, seventy-one, for Mabel Ave. MVMA, math text, eighteen thousand, seventy-nine. Next big ones we see here are the assessments for S A U nineteen for July and August. Each of those were a hundred and twenty-three thousand, five ninety-four. The lockers themselves that were mentioned earlier. Here. Getting them here, the shipping, nineteen, three thirty-five, removing the old one, sixty-five, seventy-five. And that was, uh, general expenses, five hundred and eighty-four thousand, two hundred and thirty-seven dollars. Any questions on that?
I do.
Yes.
The fuel serves, fuel surcharge?
Yep.
So we don't pay market price per month? For fuel?
Our contract with the Truck Center is for diesel at a dollar fifty per gallon.
Oh.
And, um, market pricing for the past year was in the low three dollar range. So we have a surcharge of about two dollars and ten cents per gallon for the past twelve months.
Okay, so I guess our contract doesn't say, our contract allows for there to be this adjustment?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
And if it goes down, we get money back.
We don't pay his hotel.
Yeah, yeah. I don't think they pay us anything, but.
Uh, no, one year, I think they did have to return some money on fuel.
Oh, yeah, they did, they've had to several times.
Yeah.
Further questions before motion?
I think the motion to accept the manifest has rest.
Second.
Owen paper?
Hi.
We're unanimous? Thank you. Um, MS twenty-five, DOE twenty-five.
Okay, uh, this will be the MS twenty-five, DOE twenty-five, or statements of actual expenses incurred for the last school year. We will have, uh, those documents ready for board signature on the seventeenth, when you meet in September.
Okay, uh, budget preparation schedule.
The, the, um, there's a yellow sheet that was passed around to each of you. The, uh, it, uh, shows us the preliminary budget schedule for the upcoming season. Um, we will be opening the system for school access on Wednesday this week. The schedule as depicted here has October fifteenth and seventeenth as the dates for the superintendent to be presenting to the school board. We've identified the twenty-second and the twenty-fourth of October as workshop meeting dates for the board to go through and conduct its question and answer session with administration. We would be looking to the board to come up with its final approval of the budget on November fifth. If that happens, we conceivably could transmit the budget to the Budget Committee on the seventh of November, Wednesday. The schools are going to be working to this schedule, and, uh, again, we will be working, or administration will be working to this schedule as far as presentation dates to the board.
Okay.
Right. I have a question that's not about that, but just something that was brought to my attention. Why does the, um, teachers' payroll start not according to their usual two-week schedule in September? Why do they, like, why is it two weeks later and then they get a couple of them? I'm just curious. I've talked to other people. Do you know what I mean?
I'm not sure that I follow you.
No. Because they get paid every two weeks, so is there a?
Yes.
Yeah.
But when it gets to this time of year, it would be.
Actually, the first teacher payroll isn't, it's paid in advance.
Yeah, they get, so I think they get, the teachers will, the only time it comes into effect is, so teachers, I believe, and I would need to really clarify with, with Ray, the office.
Need to, yeah.
I think they're, I, I don't have the dates for their payroll specifically, I don't do it, but, um, I believe they get paid on like their first day here, um, which is out of sequence, and then they'll get paid again, I think fairly quickly, because we're not paying them before they even show up. So we pay them on their first day. I believe that's how this year is, is, is working out.
That would be September fourth, the day after the holiday.
Yeah.
If, if what you say was accurate, it would be the fourth?
Yeah, I'll be honest with you, I don't, I don't do payroll, so, and it's not my payroll, we got S A U payroll, which we get paid all year.
I will.
Yeah, I'll, I'll get you the answer.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Maybe you guys know. Do you know what year it's for? Gothstown, it's the fourth, yeah.
It's the fourth.
They know.
Yeah. Yeah, so it's like that first pay, because it's, 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 it's so many payrolls per year that we split it, the twenty-two or the twenty-six, and so, um, technically, they could have gotten paid a week and a half ago, but it makes no sense to pay them before they actually even show up.
So the fourth, and then on the Thursday starts?
That was my question, that was my question right there, because, um, I, you know, teachers would like to have some money to get their classrooms started and stuff.
Right, yeah. Right, and I just think, because we have, we do have teachers who last minute will not show up or leave, I think it would be very risky for us to pay teachers two weeks before schools even, they even walked in the doors, so.
That's why the manifest for the payroll was only about eight hundred and twenty-seven thousand for this, the last manifest, where it spent over a million, almost a million.
Right, because you're just paying summer staff, year-round employees.
Okay.
Back to the budget prep schedule. Diane, did the Budget Committee talk about their requests?
You know, it's funny you ask that, because I'm just writing a note to Sal, um, that they did. I watched it on my, um, Budget Committee report. Um, and that they did meet after we left for the summer, and they did, in fact, discuss it. And essentially, there were no clear requests. Unfortunately, I don't, I know I don't have the notebook, that I took it, because I put it in quotes, so, um, it was with an eye to frugality, but what you need is, is what it came down to. They didn't, nobody asked for a level funded budget, nobody asked for ten percent. Um, we did, um, go around the room and talk about what they were looking for, and, and it was just, you know, with an eye to frugality, but what you need. I can have the quotes for you into when we meet again. I have it in a notebook, and I made sure to get it clear, but my memory serves fairly well.
Did they have a, a date, a date they were looking forward from us?
No, I know Chairman Kendall would have wanted to see it while before, before November. I know he was looking to, to get it earlier. But no, I do not have dates. Thank you for asking that. I'll have it on next time, um, for the next Budget Committee report, and I apologize for completely botching that, yes.
Yeah, so as soon as you know dates, or when they're, then they're gonna start looking at the school or the school presentation, just let us know, so.
Right, I mean, like I said, I mean, I know that they're looking to get started with the town. A S A P, I was just, um, talking to, to Phil Kendall about that. They had talked about the format that they wanted to receive, um, as far as when they want to present it, did they want to do it in one day? Did they want to do it in nights? And what they were looking at. It did, um, seem, they did not want to go to a Saturday, um, but have it at their meetings, but have the principals present, um, at their meeting to, um, to do it that way. What I will do for you is, um, make sure I go back to my notes, and I apologize again. Um, clearly, it's been a long summer for me. And, um, and just really get those, those knocked out for you. Anything else?
Okay.
Sure.
Thank you, Ray. New business, the Honeywell proposal.
So at your last meeting in June, um, Jim Lucy from Honeywell came and presented some options of looking at, um, phase two, of going forward with an energy audit to make recommendations for kind of what other things we can look at for cost savings, energy-wise. So we're looking for a direction from the board, and I'm guessing many of you may have tucked this away and need to be refreshed about it. Um, so it is not something you have to decide today, but again, we want to keep it on your radar. You'll want to think about it, because it will be something that will take them some time, and if we're looking to do it, our, Ray, when does our contract, when does the payoff happen, next year or the year after?
Next, two more years.
Two more years, so we would want to look to piggyback that payment, um, so we didn't have a gap, so you just, you'll want to keep this in the forefront. We'll probably continue to put it on the agenda until you make a decision, yes or no, um, unless the board is ready to make a decision.
I guess that was my question. Um, are we ready to move forward to have them come back with a finalized proposal?
I, I would like to see another proposal, because I was around for the first proposal, albeit on the Budget Committee, and that was a net win.
Yeah, it was.
Big time, big time win.
And this one, this one is gonna be financed the same way for us.
So I would like to see, and talking to Ray at the A and F Subcommittee meeting, um, there would be no financial ramifications until after the acceptance of the next presentation. That's.
Well, the actual proposal, yeah.
Yeah, so we look at the proposal, we say go, we're there.
That's where we're committed financially.
Right, we're committed, and if we ever want to back out of that, then there's, in the contract, there's something to say, well, we didn't do everything for free, give me something, but this was a win-win.
I have to make a proposal to ask, I mean, make a motion to, uh, request a proposal and, um, presentation on it.
Okay, so we can maybe have that for our October, one of our October meeting, maybe the first October meeting, I guess.
For the, what we do.
Sue, how is the possible building program gonna impact their proposal?
Um, they're well aware that we're doing, we're proposing the two building renovations, expansion, so they probably would not tackle the, they may tackle some of. Um, they're well aware that we're doing, we're proposing the two building renovations, expansion, so they probably would not tackle the, they may tackle some of the other, um, the, the pieces we're not destroying.
Okay.
Um, although I think from the most part of those, we've, through the project, have identified what needs to be done, so as far as like ventilation and heating and stuff like that, so I think I'll, we'll have them review what we've proposed, but I think most of that, we're, I mean, Bartlett will, will literally be one little wing left.
Yeah.
So it should be all energy efficient as we do that, but I think probably the focus more on here and the high, in the middle school, as well as Glen Lake, although that's a fairly new school as well, so um, it will be interesting to see what they come up with.
Right.
But yes, they are very well aware of the, the projects.
Okay.
All right, we have a motion on the floor, do we have a second?
Yes, I'll go ahead and second that motion.
Okay, second, okay then.
And I'd like to, I'm not sure if October is too early, because if the financing doesn't start for two years, when would we ask for the financing, Ray?
The project really wouldn't kick off for another two years, as I see it, Dan.
Right.
Because we'd want to complete our phase one obligations before we took anything else on.
Yes.
Yeah.
So when would the preparation for that budget begin? A year from now?
Probably spring, this coming spring.
Would, when we start?
We would want to begin planning for it.
Okay, then October, November is an appropriate time to probably get a presentation, as long as Honeywell has enough time to do their thing and do it appropriately, and give us they can...
Yeah, I think they've been kind of planning and hoping so.
Yeah. Uh, ju- just a thought, um, when we put our CIP presentation together, um, and, uh, the assumptions that we were making was that, yeah, for the elementary schools, uh, a lot of our energy improvements, for example, boiler replacements at Maple Avenue, were going to be included as part of that project. We also, and this is assuming that we have a successful bond vote, we would be able to initiate all of that work in two thousand fourteen. We also presented to the town an alternate, in the sense that if the bond votes are not successful, we still need to go through boiler replacements at Maple Avenue and at Mountain View Middle School, and we also are going to have to think about incurring costs to pull oil tanks out of the ground and do any kind of soil remediation work that was there. What the Honeywell proposal was going to consider, at least as pitched to us back in June, was standalone projects for the, uh, for energy and heating systems, uh, at Maple Avenue, and certainly at Mountain View Middle School, in the event that the bonds would not pass. We're getting to a point where it's critical to, to replace those structures, so the board might want to start thinking about questions that they would like to propose to Honeywell with respect to alternative plans, alternative sources for heating.
I thought that the alternative sources was gonna be included in their analysis.
Right, right. And, uh, if you have questions, now would be the time, uh, to get them in front of Honeywell, so that they can properly address your concerns or your needs for additional information, when they come back and make the next pitch.
And even then, if we want to make changes to the, to what they want to do, we can ask them to make some modifications to the proposal. I don't think we did that last time, but that was an option open to us.
Right. So, yeah, we should be looking at it kind of like in a two-pronged approach, one being standalone operations, uh, assuming an unsuccessful bond vote, the other being, how do we fold their proposals into the actual renovation and reconstruction work at the middle, at the elementary schools?
It's kind of like the catch-twenty-two of the portable classrooms. Do you wait to get the bond, or do you get the portables? Like, where do, which do you, do you wait to get the bond, or do you change, replace the oil tank, or risk having it leak, like?
Mm-hmm.
And that's a, yeah, that's a great example that Stacy has shared with us, because, yeah, portables are in the CIP plan.
We did here in the high school.
Yep.
Mm-hmm.
In the event of an unsuccessful bond vote.
Okay. So we have a motion on the floor? And that, can you repeat your motion?
Uh, my motion is that we proceed forward and request a proposal and presentation on Honeywell for the phase two scope of work.
And we have a second by Dan?
Mm-hmm.
All in favor?
Aye.
We're unanimous, thank you.
We'll touch base with Honeywell and find out what's a good timeframe, but also looking at your calendar of what's coming up and making sure we balance them all.
Okay, uh, MST agreement.
Yeah, I forwarded all the board members a new MST agreement, so this is kind of an interesting situation.
Yeah.
It is a, so here is, here is the background story of this. So in two thousand and six, this board voted and passed the area agreement, along with Lunen Dairy, Manchester, and Bedford wasn't part of it at that time, because they sent their kids to Manchester. Apparently, the state has just discovered that either Manchester never sent the agreement to them for ratification by the state court, or the SA, the state board never got it and then never did anything with it. We're not sure where the fault lies. The state is...
It's been six years?
Yes, they're just finding this out, so the state has, the state board has refused to accept the oh-six agreement and ratify that, so they are asking us to re-sign another agreement. I've reviewed it, is, other than adding Bedford in now, because they are now ascending district, because their kids have their own high school, other than adding Bedford in, it is a, it's, the alignment is a little bit different, but the language is the same, it's still just a two-year, the two-year program agreement, there's nothing in here about the four-year program, um, because I'm not sure where that's actually going at this point in time, but um, I would just ask the board to approve or ratify this agreement again, so that we can, Manchester can send it to the state board.
Do we have any questions?
Let me just double-check something out here, when I read it.
Has this been checked word for word against the original?
Yeah, I, I looked through it, it's, it's almost word for word, and some of it is rearranged a little bit. Interesting, I was talking to Tim Mays in Bedford, and there is a, actually, a couple of things in here we're gonna ask Manchester about, like, there is an advisory committee that a board member's supposed to sit on, and they're supposed to meet, which I, in my tenure, and I believe Daryl's tenure, and I don't know that there was ever a committee that existed.
Number nine.
Never is that clear.
Committing.
So we're gonna, Tim and I are gonna meet with Tom and talk a little bit about those things, and how to get our voice heard a little bit more, so, um, yeah.
But I also noticed you underlined, oh, here we go, yeah, the advisory committee, you underlined it, so, maybe there's something to look at.
Yeah. And that was in the old agreement, um.
Yeah, I know, but we never did it.
Correct.
Do we have any other questions?
Didn't say you had to, but you couldn't.
No cost.
Okay, do I have a motion?
No cost updates.
Sure.
No, it's a simple one.
And your motion, Suzanne?
Is to approve the new agreement.
Okay, do I have a second?
Yeah, seconded.
Okay, she, Jenny beat you too, so seconded by Jenny, yes. Um, all in favor?
I'm still reading it, but...
Opposed? Oh, what do you got?
I haven't finished, I'm just looking for the money part.
There is no money part in there, it's all set by the state.
Okay, I'm for it.
Okay.
It's not an, they send all their information to the state, the state sets the tuition rate.
Thank you.
But they can't find the agreement.
I couldn't find the money.
Okay, great, I will have...
They've been setting a rate for six years.
Okay.
Yeah.
They can't find the agreement, yeah.
Thank you. Okay, joint area board meeting.
So this is the meeting that Dunbarton has requested for September nineteenth, I'm in the process of sending the state a letter letting them know about the meeting, and, because this is the, you get three representatives from each board, and the state, actually, somebody from the state department of ed comes and runs the meeting, um, so your board has not chosen who your three members are, so we just need to appoint, we need to appoint three members. We get three volunteers.
And this is completely separate and distinct from the year agreement that we negotiated?
Correct, this is over the rental charge and the calculation used based on the appraisal that was just redone, and so that's Dunbarton's thing.
Right.
So this is independent work, then? It's independent from...
Depending on any other agreement, any other, yeah.
Any background that's happened. They can, once, once a year?
Okay, we have two years.
Yeah, I think up to three times a year, you've been...
Three times a year, you can call a meeting just to review something.
Okay.
Change anything, but review.
Su- Suzanne volunteered, so we have one, do we have any other volunteers?
I mean, if there's nobody else, I'll do it, I don't have a problem with that, but if somebody else really wanted to do it, I'm glad to let them.
I'm out of state. I can't.
Oh, she's got the excuse.
I'm going with Lori.
Where are you going, maybe I'll...
Rhode Island.
And what date is that?
The nineteenth, at seven o'clock at the SAU office.
The nineteenth.
We have a school board meeting on the seventeenth, and we have the next area agreement on the eighteenth, I was not interested in...
Yes.
No, I can do the nineteenth, I don't have a problem, cause you're, you're handling September...
I may, I may be...
Do we know where it's gonna be?
What am I handling?
Is that the SAU office?
You're handling the, uh, budget committee that month, right, I don't have to cover it.
Yes, that's on the eighteenth, yes.
Kind of neutral territory.
Okay, so then I can do the nineteenth, I don't have a problem.
So, right, the nineteenth would be my third meeting of the week, which I can, if nobody else is, well, I, I think I can, um, I'm wondering if Philip would be interested.
Philip signed that agreement at the discussion, yeah.
The representative.
So you want, you or Philip want to duke it out?
Yes.
Okay.
I mean, I'll do it.
Don't hit him too hard, you might win.
What's that?
Don't hit him too hard, you might win.
I know, I mean, I'm not gonna, you know, do, do the work that needs to be done, but I do have, um, I know of at least two other meetings that week so far, so.
Okay.
Thank you for that, Suzanne, thanks.
Um, Diane, I have three meetings that week too, if I go to this, so if there's an issue with you and, you know, we could toss something up in the air and...
We'll get three people there.
I'd rather not go to three in a row.
Gotcha, thank you, Jenny. Okay. Um, charge for building committee and membership of committee for board discussion.
So I just, I would, I'm asking the board to appoint another kind of elementary school building committee that would be responsible now for public relations, advertising, and promotion of our proposed bonds, um, to resp, to, um, expand and renovate Bartlett and Maple Lab. I think this is the next phase of that project, which is getting another committee together to start to move that project forward, advertise, get, have public meetings, get as much information out as we can, and so, um, just looking at the makeup of the, building, the last committee we just had, that just ended, we had, um, three board members, the mul, the variety of school administrators, including myself, um, Jerry, David, Ray, Suzanne, um, and Leslie, um, which I think would be the same complement of administrators, it's their schools, I think Leslie provides us lots of opportunities and conversation around what happened when they built Glen Lake, so she gives us some historical piece. Um, and then we had, so we had, basically, it was three board members and four parents, and so we would advertise out to the parents for members, um, but...
Could we offer the folks who are already on it the opportunity to continue, because we had a couple of good people?
Yeah. 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 Yeah.
We did.
Yeah, we can certainly reach out to them, and, because they're very knowledgeable about the project at this point.
Phil wasn't, was Phil on?
It was, um, Jeff T., Jason Blanchett, and Tony DiFranco, although Jason dropped out and, earlier in the process.
Phil Kendall.
Yeah, it's the lady, Donna.
Donna, um, she was great too, she was great.
Donna.
Yeah.
Yeah. And I think she may, said she may be interested in this too, so, we can certainly reach out there, but I would be looking for a motion to, um, put forward this next committee.
Do we, we have a motion on the table, put that committee forward, do we have a second? Second by Jenny, do we have any discussion or questions?
Who would like to sit on that?
I'm gonna say no on that one.
Well, why do you say we take the vote to make it official, and then we determine who is, so all in favor?
Oh, yeah, okay.
One, two, three, four, five, six, Dan, uh, I mean, opposed, I'm sorry, did you vote?
I'm going to abstain on this one.
Okay, then one abstention.
You don't want me on the committee?
No, no, you're not going to put yourself on the committee.
You're not voting for the committee?
Yeah, no, you're, you're voting to make the committee go forward.
You're voting while the committee is going forward.
Correct.
Um, or to, to allow the committee to move forward.
I'd like to continue on.
You would like to continue, so Suzanne would like to continue her work, um, Hank is not here to express whether or not he would like to...
I bet you he would.
Um, I was also on that committee. I need another committee, like I need a hole in the head.
Um, is there anybody else who would like to?
What is...
I just can't make that commitment.
Um, probably a key to meetings, probably just trying to get public relations out about the proposals about the buildings, maybe having some open houses. Probably a little more aggressive as we get closer to the bond vote.
Hosting open houses, walkthroughs, uh, pitching to, uh, town bodies, I guess, the...
And this, this committee would conclude at town election?
Yeah, cause then if it passes, we would then move into the next committee, which would be the actual building committee.
I'll take that one on. Okay. Jonathan, through, thank you.
Do you want me to see if Hank wants to come in?
Yes, we do need to see if Hank would go to.
Yes.
Okay, um, board retreat update.
So I just would like to, I have actually two things, just as a follow-up to the board retreat. As one of your action items, the board talked about having more of a presence in your school, so I have a sign-up sheet for all of our open houses. So there are eight of them, there are nine of you. So I will pass it around, if people want to sign up, I would just, the reason for this is really so that I can let principals know if there's gonna be a board member at open house, or if they can maybe introduce you or know that you're showing.
You can have one too, you know, if more than one person wants to work.
Oh, absolutely, absolutely, so I just have those listed, um, so certainly, and again, that was...
These are mostly in the evening, aren't they not?
Yes, they're all six, six-thirty, or seven, um, and remember, just the goal of that was to be just present, to let, to, you know, be there, um, as a board member supporting the schools. Um, and the other is... Was your homework assignment?
Thirteen.
Completing, for those who weren't there, um, we're just trying to revise and update our committee structure and what our committees do. And so I bought them with me, so I'll pass them around to you, um, just if you can look at, maybe your first meeting, to fill these out, what you, what I've attached, so this one is for C and E, for Jenny, who's the chair, and behind it is the C and E description, so again, just look at it, review it, see if it meets the needs of what you're still doing, if it should be updated or changed, and so I have one for all of the committees. We'll just pass them around, Jenny, Lori for HR, Hank's not here, I'll get that for him, Diane for PNC.
Thank you.
Dan for technology, Jenny for ADA, Diane for budget committee, and Suzanne Tremley for CIP.
I can't wait to see that technology.
Yeah, see, that'll be a guess, but won't it be nice to know what you're supposed to do?
I'm trying to figure out, um...
Well, I should have just grabbed the dates off it, I saw my wrong dates.
Okay.
I'm just trying to figure out which day they can do, I guess, other commitments. All right, the eighteenth, you're doing the budget committee, so I could do, I could do that one.
Yes, I am. I will be there on the eighteenth as well, I'll be there.
There is nothing. So what do you think, Dan, that committee?
I'll figure something else, I think Gary and I gotta sit.
That's, that's a six...
It would be interesting.
Can I review all policies?
Oh, he was in mine, did you do the same thing?
Yeah, and I think this will help as new board members come on, to have kind of, well, here's what the job is of that committee, it's something we have for some of them, but not for all of them.
I have a third here.
Okay, anything else, Stacy, we've digressed into different conferences.
No, so unless the board wanted to talk about the retreat at all, or anything, but I sent out...
Can you send us that schedule electronically, please? I'm not sure if this is gonna make it there.
Once it's completed, or...
No, I mean, yeah, because even if I don't get to sign up, because it doesn't make it down this far, um, I can go.
Okay.
It will, I just...
Don't worry, I'm sure I get this.
It's an actual one that I can probably get to and do.
Um, anything else that anybody would want to, to share with the board retreat?
Just an inquiry, those notes are like minutes, because it was a majority of school board members there, that it would be considered a, a meeting?
Yeah, it's a wor, like a workshop, cause you don't make any, at the meeting, you know, there's no votes, there's no motions made, it's just discussion, so that's why they're notes, as opposed to minutes.
Right, but...
Yeah, you don't have to take any minutes at work sessions.
I mean, they're public, but...
According, do we know what, which law it is, cause I know there's been some scrutiny.
Yeah.
And I didn't find it, that caveat in ninety-four-one A, the written law, when five of us or more get together, we're supposed to have something, and would it be, would you consider your, your notes to be public?
To where we don't take notes.
Yes, I consider them public, I sent them out to all of you, and I don't think there's anything on there that you would want to hide, I think it was a conversation.
So... So, safe and sorry, would it be appropriate to make a motion to accept those, just...
No, they're not minutes.
Well, actually, they are, if you think about it, because it, if the minutes are a subject matter there...
No, they're not. You could call them that. It meets the minimum requirements for minutes, it does.
Exactly, and it probably, I think it meets more than the minimum requirements. There were never any votes taken, but you don't have to take a vote to have a meeting, and that's...
It's a slippery slope, I mean, five of us meet at a picnic, are we gonna have to take minutes?
Oh, five of you meet at a picnic, one's gonna leave.
You got a quorum.
I believe that's a happens, that's a happenstance situation.
There was a time when...
The Attorney General actually opined, and actually has a manual on this, and what I'm saying... And what I'm saying, I, I came in, of course, the door was locked, so I came in a little later. Thank you, Ray, for unlocking the door for me. But you're right, I made about 20 minutes of the meeting. So I can't really vote on the minutes or the notes, but I just needed to bring that up. I'd rather be safe than sorry.
So is there a definition between workshop and meeting? A workshop is just at a workshop.
A work session, I think we've caught them in the past when we've done.
Yeah. Similar to what you've done at the budget meetings, your 22nd and 24th, whatever it is.
We make no motions, but we ask questions and everything. I guess, I think you could ask if there's any motions made.
No, I know I can ask if there are any motions, but I'm wondering if we actually do have enough information with which to move forward, and if perhaps the most, more prudent decision would be to direct an investigation as to whether or not these are officially minutes.
Make the inquiry, we can make it on the 17th.
So we know what we're voting on, you know, because it is a slippery slope and we do want to make sure we're doing absolutely what we need to be doing and correctly and, and to the letter. But I don't get a sense from our conversation here at this table that we actually have enough with which to make such a decision.
I'll, I'll research it and bring it back for you.
Perfect. Thank you. Okay, confirmations.
Actually, can we, I just have one other.
Oh, I apologize.
No, it's okay, it's just I had a last-minute parent request.
No last.
Yeah, just today, and she caught me just in time. So we have a request, Jessica Roy, who is actually a teacher in our district as well, is moving to Goffstown and was hoping to close on her house last week. It looks like they are hopefully closing on Friday, but it looks like it may be that next week, and she would just like permission to enroll her son, he's in kindergarten at Glen Lake, if they're not closed, but she believes it. She sent me the purchase and sales agreement, and they were actually supposed to close July 10th.
New construction, huh?
New construction, yeah. So they're hoping, yeah.
Been there.
So she's, it's, it's right at this moment, they're trying to close on Friday, but it's looking like it may be mid next week, and she just wants to make sure that her son can start in Glen Lake. So based on past practice, you've approved like up to 30 days, and I don't.
How will they approve their request?
Yeah. Do we have a second? I will. Okay, so seconded by Jen, any further discussion?
I have a question.
Dan?
This is now, what is stopping the closing, with being generic, is it the seller or the buyer?
I have no idea.
Most of the time it's something that's finished where they don't get the permit for occupancy.
We don't have a CEO.
So it's, it's new construction is what you're saying, and so, okay.
Yeah. Yeah.
And if you say that.
I try not to get too much into people's personal lives.
Yeah.
Well, it makes a difference for me, because if it's, if it's me and I'm buying a house in Goffstown, but I want to send my kid, but I'm the one stopping it, it's a little different than, than if I'm trying to get here.
And my gut is they're trying to, they, I mean, she's a teacher in our district, so it's not like.
Typically.
Did the motion include that 30-day caveat?
It can include that, yes.
Usually September 30th, usually it's a month.
Mm-hmm.
So is the motion amended?
Yes.
Okay.
And is our second amended?
Sure.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
All in favor. Passed unanimously, thank you. Okay, now we're at confirmations?
Now, yes. So. My list.
Look at the stack of stuff.
The stack, because we've been busy this whole.
I know.
There should be enough for everybody. Let me get around.
My nature?
Yeah. So wait till they get around. So it is front and back. Back is co-curriculars.
I thought we weren't going to have any.
So, just to start with, did it get through everybody? Okay, we have two teacher resignations. Bartlett Elementary School was a 20% PE position. She had a full-time job, so she has resigned, and we have, you'll see in a minute, we have hired somebody for one day a week. Elizabeth Newt was a hire that you approved in June. She took the job and then was offered a full-time Spanish teaching position, so she resigned from her 50% position, which is unfortunately sometimes happens, just because clearly they'd like a job, but if they get a full-time job, they like that better. So I'm bringing forward that resignation, even though she never was really here, so if you want to make a motion on those two.
Do we have a motion?
I think that one showed up.
By Jennifer, do we have a second?
Second it.
By Keith. All in favor?
Aye.
We are unanimous, thank you.
Okay, and we just have one confirmation of a transfer, which Erica Swett is going to Maple Ave. We had, some of the shifting around had a fourth grade position open, and she applied, and so she is going to move to Maple Avenue. I don't think you need to do anything on that one.
She moving from where?
She's moving from Mountain View.
Okay.
So confirmation of teacher nominations, so these are the teachers that I've hired since your last meeting.
Been busy.
Yes, we have been, but I think we've got some great hires. Mark Boucher is going to be at Mountain View in special education, that's going to be our lead program, which is our, the low-functioning special ed students. Claudia Cardenas is going to be doing the 50%, 50% Spanish. Bridget Como is at Maple Ave for second grade. Keisha Fraser, we hired for special ed, the autism program at Mountain View, that was the new position, we're bringing somebody back, and so using out of district money for that. Shannon Hoendall is going to be our new fifth grade teacher. Shelley Kaiser will be the school nurse at Glen Lake. She was a great find, she's also early childhood certified, so she was a nice, well-rounded nurse that we had. Kathy Kendall, no relation to Phil Kendall, whose I believe his wife is also named Kathy.
His wife is Kathy.
Is the new school nurse at the high school. Elizabeth Nalt at Mountain View will be the 60% music physician. Reed Pryor will be here a physical science teacher at the high school. Allison Rhodes will be Spanish here at the high school, and Brett Wilcox will be the 20% PE physician at Bartlett.
Okay. Do we have a motion on the table?
Also moved.
I'm making a motion. Okay. Keith, seconded by Jenny?
Sure.
All in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous, thank you.
I have just one confirmation of administrator, the only administrator changeover, Heather Hoss, we hired.
Didn't go down that way.
As the special ed facilitator at Mountain View.
Didn't go down that way, though.
I know. I'm taking the days.
She's made a nice transition in and has done a great job. So I'm looking for just confirmation of my hire.
Is this the position that was put back in?
Correct.
Oh, yes, I met Heather. Seems like she's going to do a wonderful job.
Yeah.
I'll make a motion.
We have a motion from Keith, do we have a second?
Yes.
Second by Suzanne. All in favor?
Oh, sorry.
Two, three, four, five, opposed? Abstain. To abstain.
Can I speak to mine?
Sure can.
I'm not saying there's anything wrong with Heather, I just wasn't a fan of adding back in the position.
Geez, surprise.
Okay, just notification, we're going to have a nurse intern working at Maple Avenue. I don't know why it says Goffstown High School, but it's Maple Avenue. I'll just swap down, and we'll go to co-curriculars last, because they're on the back. Track changes, just notification that Sumideros from Maple Ave is moving from her master's, bachelor's plus 15 to her master's.
Yes, that's correct.
And Lauren Merritt is moving from her bachelor's to her bachelor's plus 15.
You're sending out letters on the.
Yeah, actually, I already have, because these were done from my end. Leave of absence, this will, this will be actually approval, this is not one I have approved so far. Joyce Pang, who is our music teacher at Bartlett, is requesting a medical leave of absence from September to December, and I recommend you approve that.
Do I have a motion? Jenny, and seconded by Suzanne?
So.
All in favor?
Aye.
We're unanimous, thank you.
And then on the last page is co-curricular, just again, confirmation of nominations, I have approved them all. And you can see, there's little ends by if they're new positions, new people, I asked Kathy, kind of, so that the board knows who's new and who's not, and who's returning, who's vol, so the leftist coaches, then there's volunteers. So I just need confer, approval of confirmation of those hires.
Do I have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Keith, do I have a second? I'll make that. Jenny?
Most of, most people are returning, so we have good returning group of people.
No questions?
Are any of these new positions?
No.
New people?
Okay. All in favor?
Yeah.
We're unanimous, thank you.
Stacy, can I ask you a question? Have we, have we received any leave of absences for teachers at Mountain View Middle School yet, for this academic year, for any period of it?
Yes, and I don't know why it's not on the agenda, other than I think we are waiting for some more paperwork to come in.
Okay.
I had one that we got, but I, I believe we are waiting for the correct paperwork, documentation to come in.
Yes, Jenny?
Since the beginning of the year, may I bring up yet, once again, the stipend for substitute nurses? We had talked before several times about the difficulty in getting substitute nurses when we needed them, and it's just come to my, I know I reported here that one school district was paying $150 a day, and I just found that the Manchester School District pays like $135. So our 75, 60 is really.
75 if they're a RM.
Is really below.
Yep. I actually, that, that's been a.
It's our own fault we don't have any substitute.
On my summer list of things to do, and I just haven't gotten to it, was to research what surrounding districts were paying their nurse substitutes, so.
Well, I know, one is Marymas, one is Manchester, which are, you know, neither of them are particularly wealthy to be throwing money away. But I think if we want to ensure that we have nurses and we really need to get on the bandwagon, they have to keep their licenses, you know, in order to come in. It's not like a lady who's at home who, you know, is going to volunteer for the day. It's someone who has a license, has to maintain it, and doesn't come in and follow somebody's instructions, has to come in and, and make decisions, and so I, I really think it's something for us to look at sooner than later.
I'll, I'll try to have that for your next meeting. It's just, it's been on my to-do list and I just haven't gotten there.
Okay. Any other business that may legally come before the meeting? And we have no non-public proceedings, so I'll entertain a moment, a motion to adjourn. Laurie is right there with her motion, do I have a second?
I'll do that.
And Dan will second, all in favor?
Aye.
We are unanimous, thank you for coming, it was good to see everybody.